Everybody ready? I call the order of the special meeting for the board vacancy. Please rise with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Gortsberg?
Here.
Mr. Casey?
Here.
Mrs. Cheswick?
Present.
Present, thank you. Ms. Fox?
Present.
Ms. Merkel?
Here.
Mr. McCandrew?
Present.
Mrs. Yanni?
Present.
Mr. Holmes?
Present.
Eight present.
The purpose of this special meeting is for the board vacancy seat to be advertised, has been advertised duly and to fulfill the position. Now we will entertain public comment.
She was just here.
I do have a comment to make too.
Okay, alright, I'll call you right back. She left, okay. Superintendent, Keady?
Hi, everyone, good evening. So this afternoon, I just want to go through some things that at West Scranton High School, we did have an issue. We were made aware that there was a note found by a student that was written on a student desk, and it had an unspecified threat on it. Once that happened, building administration immediately were involved with the Scranton Police Department, who I would like to thank for their quick and efficient response to the situation, and the building was placed on a hold. While the building was placed on a hold, we went into an investigatory manner to make sure that there was not credibility to what was written on the desk. It's in, going into a hold is basically what our policy states we would do. The Scranton Police Department worked without us through the entire process investigating the situation to determine if there was any credibility. When we determined that there was no credibility to the threat, the hold was ended and students were dismissed floor by floor, so we had an orderly dismissal. Just so everyone knows, when a threat is made, we're always going to take the steps to investigate them, regardless of what we believe in credibility. We will take everything seriously to always put the safety of our students and staff at the forefront of everything that we do. We, we didn't believe there was credibility to this, as it was something written on a desk, but I'm never going to take a chance. And again, I want to thank the Scranton Police Department for the amount of people that responded and just how easy and wonderful they are to work with. For transparency, I did release statements on social media. A one-call didn't go out until a little later. And just to, to clear it up with the public, there, when, when an incident happens, I'm considered incident command in the central office. So I'm, I'm in my office, people are dispatched to the building, and the people who are in the building, they're working on whatever the threat is at that time. So that's why sometimes you see a lag between me putting something out on social media and a one-call, and we'll work to address that so that happens faster. I want to thank the West Scranton High School Administration, the District Safety and Security Department, members of the central administration who responded, the Scranton Police Department for their assistance in all they did to ensure that our students and our staff are safe. Please, if you have any questions, never hesitate to reach out to myself, to Assistant Superintendent O'Donnell, or Kevin Carney, who's our Supervisor of Safety and Security. But I just want to thank everyone for today and just give an update on that situation. I don't know if there's any questions. Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Now will you please go over the process that we are about to enter? Dr. Keady?
Amanda's not here? Okay, so there's no public comment, so Mrs. Orr, you, you are good, people are moved. So how this will work is that the candidates who have sent in applications and who were vetted appropriately according to our policy will have two minutes to make a public statement on, of their own, and at that time, when that is completed, there is a series of six questions, which you all have in front of you. Mr. Laffey will be reading all of those questions, and then at the end of that, we will have that candidate taken out of the auditorium, we will bring the next candidate in. You have a rubric that you can follow, it is just a guideline for scoring, but you also have a sheet with the candidates' names. You will be circling the candidate who you believe best fills the open vacancy based off their responses tonight. Mrs. Orr will publicly tabulate those, and then we will bring the results forward to the board. Any questions? Okay, Mrs. Orr? To my tech staff, if anybody needs any help, can you just make sure they could adjust the mic and they could do what they need? And I'd like to, all of you to notice Cody's fabulous shirt, ready for summer.
He's the best.
Good evening, my name is Cara Kofira, and I'm grateful to have the opportunity to meet you tonight. My interest in the vacancy stems from my academic and professional background in education management and my experience as a parent of three children in the district. I am also a Scranton School District graduate, and I have confidence that the SSD can deliver excellent programs. I seek to serve because I want to facilitate the steps to providing greater opportunities and outcomes for all of our students. Education has been the focus of my career path since day one. I have over 20 years of experience in U.S. and international education and three academic degrees in the field, demonstrating my commitment to strengthening student engagement and achievement. As the first person in my family to earn a bachelor's degree, I am forever grateful to the wonderful teachers, staff, and administrators that prepared me for success. I believe it takes a village to raise a child, and that schools and individuals within them change the lives of children every day and serve to develop the next generation of community leaders. I would like to see budgets spent fairly and responsibly to ensure we can implement programs of excellence at all stages and locations in the district, enhance extracurricular activities and facilities, strengthen communication channels, and ensure students and teachers' well-being, development, and morale. Filling this vacancy is an opportunity for me to utilize my background and skills to serve my community. I seek to serve on the board because I would like to see the district continue to take positive steps forward and be a part of ensuring that we are meeting the needs of those within it and that the district fosters and nurtures achievement.
Thank you. Ms. Kofir, the first question tonight from the board is, why are you interested in serving on the school board, and what is your motivation?
I may have covered some of that already, so just to summarize, I really want to facilitate the best opportunities for our students. I want to increase opportunities. I acknowledge the past few years have been very difficult in this district. I'm seeing good things coming out of, out of those challenges, though, and I think we should be looking to see how our district is presently and how we can continue to improve it in the future.
Great, thank you very much. The second question, what do you perceive to be the responsibilities of the school board?
It's supporting the district's mission, evaluating our progress, establishing policies, reviewing those policies, maintaining and ensuring they are aligned with our federal and state standards, serving as community leaders and advocates for improvement and change. Feel like there are many responsibilities, and each one of those is so important, but I'm pleased that there are so many ways we're looking after and in the interests of our students.
Thank you. Third question, what qualities, skills, and experience would you bring to the board?
I've, my qualities of caring about educational opportunities, I think, is my first and foremost. It's an investment in our students, it's an investment in our future. Caring about college and career readiness with three students in the district, I'm seeing, you know, them from, from just baby stages through this district now, up until what we're preparing our students to do at the university level or career readiness level. I think that... I'm sorry, I have so many notes on the page. Just keep me on track here. Repeat the question again and just make sure I've...
Certainly, yeah. What qualities, skills, and experiences would you bring to the board?
I think, I think I have an openness to reflecting on our progress, I have an openness of, to, to looking at outcomes, to evaluating programs, to seeing where our assessments are showing that we have room for improvement in our schools or curriculums or on student progress. And I think that my focus for preparing all students on their next steps, whether it's from elementary school into middle school, or middle school into high school, or high school into college. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, so if you were faced with a tough issue as a board member, such as raising taxes or cutting programs, what kind of data would you need to help you make your decision?
I would like to see a lot of data. In terms of what it would be, I would want to see outcomes, impact studies. I want to see student, teacher, staff feedback. I'd want to see focus groups discussing programs, seeing what's most important to them, if the priorities have to change, what are the most important things we can keep with us. I'd want to know what can be done or accomplished to maybe perhaps keep programs but lower budgets and, and look at options and think creatively. I, I'd want to see numbers of, of people affected, I want, I'd, I'd like to see where we can improve maybe by collaborations, if we've got duplication in programs as well.
Thank you. Next question, board members often face intense public scrutiny. How will you maintain your ethical standards when you're pressured by influential groups with competing interests?
I, I think that that is, is a significant challenge, I think you're right, the, the need to address community concerns and diverse opinions is a challenge for all school boards. If I was pressured into it, I feel, I, I feel that I've always looked at things from many different perspectives. I've, from different stakeholder perspectives, I want to look at the data, I want to look at figures, I want to look at numbers, I want to talk to people and hear what they are saying, so I can make up my mind as to what I feel may be best moving forward.
Thank you. Last question, district policy 304.1 nepotism requires that a candidate for a full-time position shall disclose but will not be disqualified by any relationship with a current director or the superintendent. Do you have a personal or professional relationship to any director or member of the administration, or are any members of your immediate family employed by the district?
No, I do not.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Jenny, you're letting them know not to leave, correct, until the dis vote is over, correct? Okay. Okay. Thank you.
I'm very excited to see the musical, because I very much so enjoy The Wizard of Oz.
Don't even start, Albert.
Little positive reinforcement.
There you go, a little encouragement.
Good evening. Thank you very much for allowing me to interview with you tonight for the open board position. As you all know, I was a board member in 2022 and 2023. The Scranton School Board is busy and fast-paced. I bring my experience on the board, my professional experience, and the ability to move back into this position quickly and efficient, efficiently, as a benefit to a seamless transition. I have been educated at Marywood University, I have a bachelor's degree in applied sociology and human services, and a master's in school counseling. My work experience includes Friendship House, Northeast Counseling Services, and the Stroudsburg Area School District, where I spent most of my career as a school counselor. While there, I worked in grades five through 12, with the majority of my time in eighth and ninth grades. I also, excuse me, I also have 66 postgraduate credits in school and child-related topics. As a board member, I am committed to our students first and foremost, however, employees, taxpayers, and community are always part of any decision that needs to be made. This is not always easy, this is a balancing act, to always look at how any decision you make will affect the stakeholders while being fiscally responsible with taxpayers' dollars, whether these are local, state, or federal dollars. In making these ongoing and difficult decisions, you must spend a great deal of time reading all the information that is provided, as well as doing your research into the topics at hand. At present, we have a government that is making decisions that will greatly impact the future of all districts. From the major changes in the Department of Education, stripping the department of its resources will be catastrophic for our students who need educational services and support. These changes will upset and could essentially alter what education looks like moving forward. We must have a board that is ready to keep up with these changes and stay on top of these ever-changing conditions. I strongly pledge to commit my energy to the academic achievement of our students, that they are prepared, prepared to leave our schools with a plan for their future, to continually work on all fair funding initiatives, and to continue to improve student and school safety. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Cleary, we have a, just a few questions for you. The first question is, why are you interested in serving on the school board, and what is your motivation?
Sorry. You know, you think back, I think back to when we were all like 15 years of age, and everybody would say to us, where do you want to be? What do you want to do? Where do you want to go? And I always used, my answer was always, well, I want to work with kids, but I never knew what that kind of looked like. And it took me from that time till I was about 30 before I kind of molded it into becoming a school counselor. I've always worked with kids, as you can tell by my past work experience, that's always, since I was a kid, I've wanted to work for kids. I retired a couple of years ago, I was on the board for a couple of years, and I just feel like I have a lot more to offer, I'm not done. I still have the energy, the motivation, to want to make a difference in our community, for our students and our community, all with my background and my knowledge, helping to make those decisions and continue to move the, the district forward. We've done a lot in the last six years or so, and I'd like to continue to see that happening.
Thank you. Next question, what do you perceive to be the responsibilities of the school board?
Well, our responsibilities are to, to spend the time it takes to be well-informed, we're provided information every week that we need to thoroughly review, and if we need additional information, get that information. But the board itself, we're responsible for budget, personnel approvals, we're also responsible for strategic planning, so to speak, like figuring out where our goal, what our primary goals are, what our secondary goals are, and to make sure those goals come to fruition, and to work collaboratively as a group of 10.
Great, thank you.
That includes the superintendent, not just the nine on the board.
Yes. Third question, what qualities, skills, and experience would you bring to the board?
Well, I said, I think I said a lot of that in my opening, but to reiterate, my background, my professional background, having been a school council for almost 27 years, I come forth with a lot of background in education. I worked in a different district, I didn't work in this one, I worked outside of this county. My education, my interest in children, my love of children, I just think that I bring that, as well as my two years on the board in '22 and '23, I can kind of hit the ground running. I'd have to obviously be caught up in a few things, but I felt that when I left the board a few years ago, that I still had so much more I wanted to do, and I had gotten to the point, you know, the, the Pennsylvania School Board Association says it takes about 18 months to two years, and I thought, ah, it does, it takes you about 18 months to fig, you know, to kind of get grounded and figure out, you know, what you're doing and, and have a clear understanding of everybody's roles and, and your responsibilities.
Thank you. Next question, if you were faced with a tough issue as a board member, such as raising taxes or cutting programs, what kind of data would you need to help you make your decision?
Well, the data would be how it affects each of the stakeholder groups, from the students, to the employees, to the taxpayers, to the community. I mean, making a, an increase, whether it's cutting programs or whether you're increasing taxes, you have to look at the whole picture, and you have to look at the benefits that you're going to get from making those increases. And I, I, when I was on the board, I remember saying, if we can explain to people where the tax crease is going, I think it's easier for people to accept a tax increase. When it just goes into the oblivion and you have no idea where the money goes, I think it's harder for people to stomach. I think when you explain we need this tax increase because we're going to do A, B, and C with it, I think it's easier for the community, but I think just understanding how it affects everybody, like how it will affect the students, what services are we going to be removing? Are there other funding that we can get to replace those services? So there's a lot of, it's really a balancing act, I mean, you have to take everybody into consideration, and sometimes you're going to make friends and sometimes you're not, and that's, you know, you have to have thick skin, you have to know that what you're doing is for the best interest of, of the whole.
Thank you. Next question, board members often face intense public scrutiny. How will you maintain your ethical standards when you're pressured by influential groups with competing interests?
I have always done what I thought was right. I will always listen to people, but I don't necessarily let people sway me. I will listen to them, and it doesn't mean I won't change my mind if they shared information that will have me think differently about something, but I'm a pretty strong person, and I do always do what I think is right. So, I'm not sure if I answered your question, I, I will listen to people, but that doesn't mean they're going to necessarily sway me. If I truly believe with my research and the information provided that I'm making the correct decision, I, I will make the decision that I think is best.
Thank you. Last question, district policy 304.1 nepotism requires that a candidate for a full-time position shall disclose but will not be disqualified by any relationship with a current director or the superintendent. Do you have any personal or professional relationships to any director or member of the administration, or are any members of your immediate family employed by the district?
No one in my family is employed by the district. I obviously was on the board, so I, I know several of you sitting up there, so yes, I, I know several board members personally from my work on the school board.
Thank you.
If anybody has any other questions regarding that, I'd be more than happy to answer. Okay?
Thank you, Ms. Cleary.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
They're guidelines, yeah.
I, I do not believe, this is my first time going through this with you guys, we'll double-check when Mrs. Orr gets back up on the stage.
This circled name.
That's what I remember from the past.
I've just been directed by Attorney Hazel Time that you're only turning in the circled names.
It's for your use.
Do I just start? Good evening, thank you, everyone, for having me. I greatly appreciate this opportunity to be able to serve on the board, hopefully a little bit earlier than the election. I am, I just have a passion for education, and I'm very excited to be able to have the opportunity to help the students in the school district and help the teachers and everyone kind of get back to a good place where the district is a desired school district in the area, and people want to come here, and they're fighting to come into this district. So I'm very excited for this opportunity. I've lived in Scranton my entire life, I have a lot of friends that currently have school-aged children and are deciding where to send their children, and it breaks my heart when they discount the Scranton School District, and I want to help the district to come back to a place where people are excited to come here and students want to be part of the district and just have the opportunity that I had growing up. I'm a product of the Scranton School District, and I couldn't be more proud to say that. I currently work in the city of Pittston as their business administrator, I manage their budget and finances, I also run their human resource department, and I own a small business that used to be in Old Forge, and now it's in Pittston, and I only own it for the next month. I did sell it, so I have a lot of time now to dedicate to the school board position. So thank you for the opportunity, and happy to answer any questions. So thank you for the opportunity, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Strzlecki. We do have a couple of questions. The first one is, why are you interested in serving on the school board? What is your motivation?
So my motivation is to help. I love helping people. I love being involved in the community. I'm very involved in the city of Pittston, working there, and I want to bring that involvement back into Scranton where I live, and I've lived my entire life. I have a passion for education. A lot of my career was spent in higher education, and I just love the educational process. And being on the school board will help me to help the students and bring my expertise in that area to the school board. I want to help the school district become something that's desired and people want to be here, and I want to help the students get a great education and a well-rounded education before they set off into the world.
Thank you. Next question. What do you perceive to be the responsibilities of the school board?
So I think the responsibilities of the school board are not only to make policies and procedures, I think it's to also help support the students and the teachers of the district and all of the staff, too, to help carry through and make this district successful, make the students successful, and help with their academic achievement. So while, yes, the school board does set policies, procedures, protocols, it's also, I think, the board's responsibility to help carry that through and help be able to support everyone that's going to carry through those policies.
Thank you. Next question. What qualities, skills, and experience would you bring to the board?
Like I mentioned, I have ten-plus years in higher education in all different realms of education, higher education. I also have a lot of budget experience, so I do think I can help manage the school district's finances, help create budgets, help manage budgets. I have very in-depth knowledge of grant funding and writing grants, so I also think that could be an asset to the board, too.
Thank you. Next question. If you were faced with a tough issue as a board member, such as raising taxes or cutting programs, what kind of data would you need to help make your decision?
So for raising taxes, I would ask for past tax raises. I would ask for historical data as far as that's concerned. I would want to ask questions about what the tax raises in the past have funded and the proof of what they did help to fund. As far as tough decisions, I think you just need to ask for history and for information from all parties that are involved before you make cuts and before you make decisions like that, and ask for feedback and different things like that before you make a decision.
Thank you. Next question. Board members often face intense public scrutiny. How will you maintain your ethical standards when you're pressured by influential groups with competing interests?
I think you always have to keep in mind that you are working for the best interests of the students and the teachers and overall the community. So I think that that has to lead all of your decision-making, and you can't be swayed by influential people or things like that. You really have to stay and stick to your ethics and your standards, and you have to carry that through, and just keep in mind that you're working for the betterment of everybody.
Great, thank you. Last question. District Policy 304.1 nepotism requires that a candidate for a full-time position shall disclose but will not be disqualified by any relationship with a current director or the superintendent. Do you have a personal or professional relationship to any director or member of the administration, or are any members of your immediate family employed by the district?
My mother is employed in the cafeteria of West Granton High School.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we just circle our choice, right?
Yes.
Glenna, your choice.
Correct.
The policy says that we're supposed to deliberate publicly on the selection of candidates once the interviews have been completed.
I didn't hear.
The policy says that the board will deliberate publicly on the selection of candidates once the interviews have been completed. So are we supposed to deliberate at this time?
If the board chooses to, you may, you don't have to.
I think we had three great candidates. I think it was a good, good thing to have.
I think I could kind of follow that up to say they were three great interviews and three really strong candidates, three people that really seem like they want to contribute to this district. And I think we're fortunate to have such a difficult choice in front of us.
Agree.
So we're not deliberating?
Deliberating as far as, everyone's making a statement more than, I think it's individual. When you say deliberating, what are you specifically looking to do?
Oh, I mean, it just, it makes it clear in the policy that we're supposed to publicly discuss this before we make a vote. The board will deliberate publicly on the selection of candidates once the interviews have been completed.
That's what everybody's doing right now, speaking what they want to say.
Okay.
So everyone's free to speak.
Yeah. Again, I'll just echo what I said earlier. I think each one brings a, you know, unique perspective and experience to this position. I think it's a good problem to have, and it's encouraging to see three great people who want to be involved in our district. So it's definitely a tough decision, but we said the vote who we think is the best fit.
Yeah, second to what Director McAndrew said. Everybody's clearly qualified. These are some pretty impressive resumes, and it's nice to see that kind of level of interest, which is something you don't always see. So thanks to all those who applied.
I basically agree with Mr. McAndrew, Mr. Borthwick said. I was highly impressed with the qualifications and the backgrounds and what seems to be the dedication that all three of these people possess. No matter who we pick, I believe that the taxpayers and the children of the city of Scranton will be well-served.
It was very good to have three very well-qualified candidates with the motivation to help our students, teachers, staff, programs, and also think about the taxpayers, and to also say they feel they can make decisions without being swayed. They would vote things with their hearts.
I just want to thank the candidates for stepping up. I know this is a tough thing to do. I just, this is definitely a tough choice, three professional women that are hardly qualified. So I just want to thank them for stepping up, and I know whoever we get, they're going to do a great job.
Okay, yes, I agree with what everybody said. I think the three people are all very well-qualified and interviewed very well. I do think they all three have different backgrounds and things they would bring to the table, which I think would help us to deliberate a little more, but that's okay that we won't at this time. We'll just roll with it.
Yeah, I'm not understanding. You say deliberate, you're basically everyone making a statement of what they want to say. I think everyone's had that opportunity. If you would like to say more, you're more than welcome, but everybody is basically saying what they want to say. That's the equivalent of having a discussion.
I don't recall, like, in 2022, but that's the last appointment that we did, any sort of extensive deliberation, correct?
I mean, I think our votes are a matter of public record, anyway.
Yeah.
They are. Someone could do a write-to-know if they want to know how we voted, so that's an option.
Yeah, no, no, I'm not saying, I think it's just to, like, we're, as a board of eight, selecting a person to sit with us, and I think it would just be helpful to hear each other's thoughts and ideas and such, but it's fine. Everybody's thoughts right now are just very blanket that everybody would be qualified, which I agree with. That's just not helping us deliberate to an answer. But that's more than fine, how everyone chooses to respond.
Can you share your thoughts and maybe help us, like, what you mean by more in-depth answers? Can you give us an example, so maybe we could help us say more?
It's okay. I'm good with this conversation at this time. Thank you.
If anybody has a question they want to specifically ask, they're free to. That's why this has been open. That's the equivalent of a debate, a discussion. Not forcing anyone to speak, but anyone is allowed to say what they personally feel.
Mrs. Orr, will you collect papers? And there are two members of the media here to be with you while they are counting. And Mrs. Gribek?
Yeah.
So wherever you head, the two members of the media and Mrs. Gribek will head with her.
All right, I'm going to start to lay eggs, so everybody?
Thank you.
Yeah, we got to sign.
Yeah.
That's awesome. She came back here to raise her kids. That's the town, that's not the, that's where Harvard is. Cambridge University is in.
Yes, please.
Okay. You want to call them back in before I explain it?
Yes, yes.
You want me to explain it before they come back in?
No, like, explain it all while they're here.
Exactly.
Media come up on stage, because you're going to be picked. I don't care who it is, I just need somebody up here.
What's the pick? Jack.
They're going to go through it all. That's the name out of the hat, so.
They mean the name out of the hat?
So they pick a name?
Whose name goes first? The first goes first?
Oh.
The board secretary shall announce the order in which the candidates are ranked. And if there's a tie among those listed, prior to the commencement of any vote, the names of the tied candidates will be placed in a hat, and will be presented for a vote, and the order each is drawn.
So now that the candidates are back in, the results will be announced by Mrs. Orr. If there is a tie, then the names will be placed in a hat, and we will have somebody independent pull the name via the policy as it exists. Attorney Hazel Tyne just read that aloud to the board, so.
Question, if we go around and it's still a tie at the first round, what do we do?
Glenna?
I didn't hear.
Go ahead.
If we go around, right, and you say the first name, it doesn't get five, the second name doesn't get five, like, we just keep going until we get five?
The first candidate with a majority vote wins. That's why you pull them from a hat.
Yeah, but if it's a tie, is what he's asking.
Tie again?
Yeah.
Does it go to the courts then, at that point?
You keep going until you get a majority.
That's what, that's what I mean. Could we have Mrs. Orr read the results? We start there? I feel like this is on first.
The policy says the first candidate receive an affirmative vote, a majority of the seated board members will be appointed to fill a vacancy. I guess this is like the vote. We keep voting until we get one.
Got it.
Okay.
Got it.
Mrs. Orr, can you please read the results?
Sure. We have a tie between Carol Cleary and Jenna Strzlecki. It's a four-four tie.
So we'll be, what's the, we'll be drawing the names from a hat?
Now, the names go, need to go in a hat, which I brought for the purpose, and then the neutral guy back here will draw them, and then we vote. I don't. You guys vote.
Sorry, what's her name?
Jack Colkin from WNEPTV.
Do we pull a name?
Yes.
We just won. Yep.
Ready? I will now call for a I will now call for a roll call vote for Jenna Suleski to fill the vacancy for the board position. Mrs. Orr, roll call.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Cheswick?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
No.
Ms. Merkel?
No.
Mr. McAndrew?
No.
I'm sorry, did you say no?
No.
Uh, Mrs. Yanni?
No.
Mr. Borthwick?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
It's four-four. Motion fails.
Now, I will call for a motion to vote on Carol Cleary to fill the board vacancy. Mrs. Orr, roll call.
Mrs. Cheswick?
No.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Merkel?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
Yes.
Mr. Borthwick?
No.
Mr. Casey?
No.
Mr. Holmes?
No.
Four-four. Motion fails.
So, going back around?
If a motion failed, how do we just go right back to it?
Introduce another motion.
Do it again.
All right.
As I say, I think it's like the Pope.
I think you just keep going.
So, do we have to go back into the hat, or do we have to, do we go back through the order that was picked out of the hat?
I, I think we pick out of the hat again.
We pick out of the hat again. Okay.
Who's the hat?
Who's the name?
I know. I've called.
I make a motion that we call for a vote to appoint Jenna Stalecki, and I keep destroying that last name, and I apologize, to fill the vacancy for the board position. Mrs. Orr, roll call.
Well, um, could I, could we have on the question with this, or no?
Okay. Sure. First of all, a second?
A second?
On the question?
I'm just wondering if, rather than keep going round and round, we should have a discussion at this point. I'll, I'll share with you my thought process. As, as we said, to all of the candidates, I think all three candidates would have been fabulous. I think all three of them could have stepped into this role. I think what we need right now is someone who can hit the ground running, so that is why my consideration is for Carol Cleary. She's done the role. She can step up. She can sit down. She can be prepared to vote at the next meeting. So, I'm going to be very upfront that that's, that's why my vote is for her. Like I said, I think all three candidates would be fabulous. I appreciate that all three put their time in here and have the experience, but I, I do think that Carol Cleary has the most experience and can really help, help the board out at this time.
I'm also in favor of Carol for the same reasons that Director Yanni said. All three candidates had excellent resumes, and we do have an election in Nov- in May, and, but Carol can still hit the ground running right now.
And just to clarify, so the third person doesn't go up for a vote because they weren't nominated?
Yes. The attorney stepped off to call the solicitor. Um, I don't want to give, I don't want to give legal guidance, but... When she's back, Director Fox, please ask her question.
Someone had, someone had a question for you.
Director Fox.
Can we know what was, what the guidance was first?
Oh, I think the, the president of the board.
If the board is unable to reach a tie in the next vote, um, then we will not be able to appoint a director, and thus the solicitor at this time, recommendation is that we would have to repost it and then try again.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that. What was that?
If we are unable to reach a decision tonight, then we will have to, according to the solicitor's advice, repost this position and go through this again.
I think, I think the question when the solicitor stepped out was the third candidate, because they didn't get any votes, did they not, we don't nominate that name, correct?
I didn't hear. I'm sorry.
When you stepped out, Director Fox, asked a question about, do we not, do we not bring up the third person's name because they never got any votes, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, we're going to go back?
Yes. If the board can't agree, then you can't see anybody.
Okay.
So, may we go around then and just say the name of our candidate?
Well, there's a motion on the floor, I believe.
I see.
There's, there's a motion right now on the question, and that's what the roll call is, so, anyone, anyone else have anything on the question?
No.
I just wanted to say about, like, the experience. I remember being a candidate in 2021 and coming onto the board. I was brand new to politics, and the community gave me a chance, so I, I see both sides here where we, we do need the experience, but going off of my experience as well as, as somebody new to the political scene, I, I'm strongly, I'm confident in, in the individuals that we have, that either one would do great, and they would hit the ground running with their experience.
I call for the vote.
Mrs. Orr?
So, I'm sorry, what, what was the motion again? Just so I know.
The motion is currently to nominate Jenna...
Strzlecki.
Sure. I'm sorry. To fill the board vacancy seat as a hat, that was the name that was drawn out of the hat by the media representative.
And just on, on the question, I, I'm in favor of all three candidates. Um, I did get the opportunity to work with, um, Miss Strzlecki, sorry, too, at Lackawanna, so I, I know you're fully capable and such. I just do also agree with some other sentiments of what is needed at the time for the next few months to get us through. Thank you.
Mrs. Orr, roll call.
Um, Ms. Fox?
No.
Ms. Merkel?
No.
Mr. McAndrew?
I, I, like I said, all three of them are great. My first choice was Carol, but I'm not going to, we, we need to have a board member, so I can't have this go any further. I mean, I'm going to say yes.
Mrs. Yanni?
No.
Mr. Borthwick?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Cheswick?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Five affirmative, three negative. Motion passive. I'm sorry, Mrs. Orr, I didn't...
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Jenna. Would you please come up on stage to be sworn in and take your place?
Thank you to the other two candidates who put in.
Thank you.
My mic is on. Oh, it is.
I saw your ramen.
Yes.
Whatever you need, you're going to...
Thank you.
Okay.
You did see Vino?
Yeah.
Thank you. I'm going to make sure once you sit down.
Sure.
Do you raise your right hand, please, P. L. for me?
Aye, Jenna Stalecki.
Aye, Jenna Strzlecki.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Welcome.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
To the other candidates, I want to say thank you very much for, um, applying for the position. Um, we hope to see you at some point. Thank you very much for your time and your effort, and to the media, thank you for assisting us. And to Mr. Strecklet.
Strzlecki.
Thank you. We welcome you to the board. Director McAndrews is going to work with you, um, this week and help him get caught up in speed. He and I talked, so after this meeting's over, if you two could link up, thank you. With that said, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Some more.
Some more.
Second. And I'd just like to note that I'm more than happy to help you in any way also, Jenna.
Do you need, I need a break? Does anyone need a break?
I think five minutes. I think you're, yeah, we give a five minute.
Okay.
Five minute break?
Did we, did we adjourn?
Yes.
Okay. Let me just, just make sure I have you right there.
We're going to take a five minute break.
Okay. Okay, good.
Okay, good.
I'll close it.
You know, you know, Kenny, right? For the work session agenda for April 28th, 2025, Mrs. Orr, roll call.
Mr. Borthwick?
Here.
Mr. Casey? Mrs. Cheswick?
Present.
Ms. Fox?
Present.
Ms. Drusilov?
Present.
Ms. Merkel?
Present.
Mr. McCandrew?
Present.
Present.
Present. Athletics?
Yes, under athletics, um, all right, we will have a discussion regarding the West Granton High School Wrestling Cooperative Agreement.
Uh, folks, Mr. Genalezza and Mr. O'Donnell have been sending a lot of correspondence on this. Um, and there's gonna be two options that the board will need to take consensus on. And as we just sat a new board member, I would ask President Holmes to do that on Thursday of this week. It also gives people time to go back and reread any board memos. But the two options we would need to pick between are option one, which would be to discontinue the yearly co-op wrestling agreement with Riverside after this season and the season has ended. Um, if we took that action, the district has to notify District Two and the PIAA in writing that it will terminate the cooperative wrestling agreement with the Riverside School District. Option two is to continue the wrestling co-op agreement between the two districts. Um, it automatically continues, however, we would have to have a motion, uh, to, um, approve it. And then Riverside School District would do the same at their board meetings. Um, we would then send into PIAA, uh, the paperwork and the fee. Mr. Genalezza is here if there's any other questions. Um, but as there was a lot of information given, including some legal information, um, uh, legal, uh, from the, the solicitor. What I would ask at this time and to let the new board member catch up is that you decide, if you have any other questions, you can reach out to Mr. Genalezza or Mr. O'Donnell. Um, on what you, like, what clarification you need. And then a consensus would be taken as to which motion I'll put forward on the agenda.
Could, could we address the legal advice that we've been given at this time? Because I think it's important that we, I mean, we say discussion here. And I think, I mean, we were just told, was it last week? That, um, any of these PIAA sanctions could prove devastating to the athletic career of West Granton wrestlers. I mean, our, may I finish speaking?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I think it says, with this in mind, continuation of the program with Riverside while providing opportunities for a few wrestlers poses devastating possibilities to many more Scranton wrestlers. I understand that Principal Stevens has, you know, tried to put some things in place. But the recommendation that we have in front of us is that it would be in the best interest of the Scranton School District to discontinue the arrangement with Riverside in the future.
Correct.
Let me finish that by saying, I'm a Westsider. I wanna do what's right for West Granton Wrestling. For us to pursue this, I have real concerns that we could hurt our Scranton students. And those students could end up losing a scholarship if something were to happen regarding these PIAA sanctions. So I think as directors, we have to think about our Scranton students first. And has that, any of that legal guidance changed?
No, we asked for an updated legal guidance at our meeting on Thursday and that legal guidance has not changed. Um, and I will always recommend to the board to follow legal guidance.
Okay, are we expecting our new legal counsel to provide any new legal guidance?
That is the other thing that I did put this when I met with them on their radar and they were to get back to me after reviewing the situation. But again, there's a lot of documentation for them as well.
Okay.
So when I get their information, I will also forward that out to the board immediately.
So my question is if we make a decision to keep or get rid of this co-op, either way, we still have to go in front of PIAA.
Correct.
And they could sanction us whether we keep this or not. So it's not like we end this co-op and we're, there's no more sanction, it doesn't go away, correct?
Oh, correct, the, the sanction is, the sanctions, they're taking us, um, regardless.
Right, so again, this, voting this to, to next week, yes or no, does not change the fact that we're going in front of PIAA, they're not dropping the sanctions. And do we know, do we have a date yet for that?
I do not have a date. Mr. Genalezza, have we been given a date on the next PIAA hearing?
Um, gathering information on, I think everything will be set going forward.
Could we have legal reach out to see if they can get us a date? Because this has been going on since the end of wrestling season. And I feel like they're dragging it out, because if we have to make an important decision, I would like to see if we can get the ruling first, at least get something on schedule to get this over with.
So, so I assume there's no way to know per what Director McCandrew just said. Would the PIAA give us guidance on if it's favorable or not to dissolve this? Like, I don't understand, like, how would we, we won't know personally if us dissolving this would have, or not, would have an impact on their decision? Like, if they were to make a decision and we said, we're dissolving it, they might be lighter, but they might not, and we won't know, they won't give us any type of.
Correct, PIAA will not give formal guidance.
One, one interesting thing I learned, and maybe you could correct me if I'm wrong. If, say, we pass this, um, co-op and Riverside pass it, it still has to get approved and passed by PIAA themselves.
Correct, Mr. Genalezza, correct?
So if PIAA doesn't want us to have the co-op, they could say, yeah, don't do the co-op. But I don't feel like they're giving us any guidance or anything, I don't know.
Yeah, if they don't like it, they could just not approve it.
Okay, so just to clarify, so if we approve it, then Riverside approves it, and then it goes to PIAA, and if they don't want us to do it, they'll both know.
Yeah, that's, yeah, they can go either way.
Do, do we know that for sure? I mean, I, I'm just reading the legal guidance here and it says, you have to balance interests and risks. So if you're gonna balance interest and risk, I'm always gonna err on the, the side of what's in the best interest of Scranton students versus the risks. Which, again, the risks are, um, having the entire West Granton Wrestling Program, um, discontinued by the PIAA. Again, I, I'm a Westsider, I don't wanna do this, but I, I'm always, always going to say what's best for our Scranton students. And we've got some really good wrestlers, I don't know, could a scholarship be jeopardized? I don't know.
I, I just, I, right now, I don't feel like we have a risk because whether we approve it or not approve it, they're basing off of previous year, and they're gonna rule any way they want. So I, I don't even know why we're even having this discussion until we have the PIAA hearing. Once we have the hearing, but again, if this is something we could say, hey, we'll get rid of this if this sanction goes away, that's a whole different story, but we're not hearing that.
Yeah, well, so why don't we wait until after the hearing to make a call?
I, I don't know, and I, I would never make comment if it would or would not impact the hearing itself. I will have legal reach out for a date for the hearing, because I wanted to confirm, I had not been given a date, I wanted to make sure Mr. Genalezza did not have anything. The current legal opinion is from, uh, from Kingsbury. I did put this on the priority list of Joyce Carmine Moran, I will follow up with them as well tomorrow to see if they differ an opinion at all.
So is there, do we have to take this consensus this week? Or is this something that can, as Director Borthwick said, can this wait until potentially after the hearing? Is there a reason why this has to be done this week?
There was a timeline, Mr. Genalezza, that you were concerned about, um, with the approval process. And that's why Mr. Genalezza had asked to put this on tonight. Um, so that was where the concern to move this forward was, correct, Mr. Genalezza?
Correct, uh, the board, our board will have to approve it in a motion, Riverside's board will have to approve it in a motion. Last two years, the timeline was Riverside approved it in April, we approved it in May, then we did the sufficient paperwork and the fee. It's May starting Friday.
Has Riverside approved it?
And if this rolls into the summer, I mean, I don't know how much, I know our board's gonna meet, I don't know how much Riverside, and if, if this is brought into next school year, I, I just don't wanna keep other districts held hostage either.
Has, has Riverside approved it on their end?
Not that I know of.
Can we reach out to Riverside to see if they're even, can we reach out to them to see if they're even entertaining it? I mean, I, I think it goes down.
I think they want, I think they want to, but I think they're waiting on us.
But they approved it first last time, correct?
They approved it first last year. I have not heard, I did not get any information on whether or not they.
That's another piece of information I can give you by third.
Can, and also, I guess, uh, it's legal this, is there a, a caveat where we approve it based upon, and if the PIAA rules against us, then we, you know, we dissolve it?
Well, let's backtrack, the PIAA, I called Mr. Manjakis, he said it's an automatic renewal unless we put it in writing, we wanna discontinue it. It's automatic renewal. So therefore, they're gonna give it the stamp of approval if we submit the paperwork and we want to go through it.
So PIAA is automatically gonna renew it unless we stop it? And it's not gonna make a difference on the hearing?
No. Well, they're, the only way that's gonna be discontinued is if we put it in writing, we want to discontinue it. Otherwise, PIAA is gonna let it roll and it's gonna be an automatic.
Right, but Mr. Manjakis, who's the head of PIAA, right, in this area?
He's the head of our District Two, he's, I don't know if he's, uh, Mr. Lombardi's the head of the PIAA.
That's what I meant.
But he's one of, he's one of the offices.
In your conversations, he never said, hey, if you guys dissolve this, this sanction goes away?
No, never said that.
But I'm also understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Riverside, we could take a consensus and ratify it at the next board meeting. Riverside has the same ability, meaning we do have time to wait to allow our legal team to go back to PIAA and say, here's the two scenarios. Which one would be one that you're willing to accept? And again, I understand you saying about voting meetings, but Riverside, like us, can take a consensus and ratify it at a meeting at a later date. So basically, what I'm hearing is that we need to allow our legal team to go forward, speak directly to PIAA and say, what can we do so that we don't hurt our students? Honestly, truly, hard question, what will you accept? Come back to the board in writing, we get something in writing, we can take a consensus based off of that. And whatever the consensus is, we can ratify it at a future board meeting. So the time constraints is not really there as much as everybody thinks they are. Because all boards have the ability to take a consensus and then ratify it at the next meeting.
And, and that, if you notice, that's one of the reasons I put discussion and not discussion motion, because I, I knew that there's a possibility we'd wanna table this at this time. But I also knew that there's been a lot of information given on this, there's been legal opinions given on this. And if there were further questions or information such as you just gave me, to reach out to Riverside to see if the new legal has anything to have legal contact PIAA, I would need to ascertain that information for you as well.
So, uh, Dr. Keating, would any part of this conversation today have an impact on the hearing? I know some of the, the legal guidance we talked about in private session. Um, but I just wanna make sure that what we're talking about today is stuff that we are able to talk about and it's not gonna negatively impact this at all.
There's nothing that I've been told at this point that this will change the fact that we have to go to hearing for the next concern. There's nothing that I've been told that, that's gonna change that. Mr. Genalezza, I know you've had conversations, I don't know if you've received anything different.
Did not, I did not. No, it's, it's, uh, it was, there was an, an issue number one, and this is issue number two that's on.
My, my opinion, and this is just my opinion, I feel like we always react quick, right? Like, we, let's have this hearing and see what happens. Because we can react if PIAA can come back and say, hey, there's no sanctions. And now all these kids, there's 16 kids in this program that, you know, are, are moving up in this program that have nowhere to wrestle. So I think, I think instead of just reacting, let's have the PIAA hearing and then make a decision.
That's why I motioned to table this at this time.
A second.
Mrs. Orr, under discussion? Mrs. Orr, roll call.
Wait, we don't, we. Yeah, it's not, there's no, there's no motion. So it would just be a directive not to put the motion on.
Alright, directive not to put the motions on.
Well, right now, it's not.
Not a motion?
Yeah. It's not a motion, that's why I would've asked for consensus for a motion.
So we'll probably just hold on until our packet and receive more information regarding legal opinion in Riverside.
And I did, oh my God, it seems like 9,000 weeks ago, when did we meet with, with JCM? Wednesday or Thursday? Thursday, so I just met with them going into the weekend to give them the list of things that had to have priority.
Okay, that's fine. So we are pulling this then from the, uh, the voting meeting next week. Okay.
Budget and finance? I thought they were both looking together.
Nope, so, this is, Mr. Director Yanni?
Uh, sure, would you like to discuss band uniforms for both high schools?
Yes, both high schools need band uniforms. I will say very clearly, it is gonna be my recommendation to you that when we get the cost of these, we should approve them. It has been over a decade since either high school has had new band uniforms. Um, Mr. Laffey is exploring options, we are looking at a cooperative agreement as possibly being able to do this, to expedite the process, um, to get this done. It will be a cost, but the kids have gone at least 10 years, they need new band uniforms.
They absolutely deserve it.
Yeah, 100%, we, we get new sports uniforms all the time, I think this is a, a no-brainer, we, these kids deserve it.
I think if we could vote on it now, we would, I think we would all be in, in favor.
So we're looking at a cost of approximately 800, I'm sorry, $80,000 to $120,000. It is not budgeted in 2025, so what we will be bringing forward, and we'll do this under budget and finance, but will be a budget transfer to move those, allocate those dollars. So we do have the budget available to go out and solicit some quotes. Um, there is quite a lead time on this, so we are exploring possibly a cooperative option to kind of hopefully get something in front of you for Monday night.
The, the one good thing is usually at the beginning of the football season, it's very warm. And a lot of times, having been a high school principal with a large marching band, they wore khakis and a, and a golf shirt for those opening things, it's too hot in the band uniform. So I'm hoping that could buy us a little bit of time too, but there is a design element to this, and then, then an actual production element.
Well, while we're talking about the band, is there any equipment they need too? Like, have, have we explored that? Because I know, again, sports, we're always getting new equipment, but.
I would have to check in with both principals.
Okay.
Um, I've met, and I know I've updated you guys, I've met with the music teachers quite regularly. Uh, the biggest concern that I can remember from that, and I don't wanna, I, I would have to go back through all my notes, is that we can only have 50 kids because there's only one person. And you can only have one bus, so eventually, if there was interest, you'd need to look at an assistant band director and a possible second bus for, um, a larger marching band.
Can you find if we have been turning kids away because we're close to that 50, or?
I, I, I will, I will get that answer and put it in the packet if we've had any issues beyond 50 kids.
Okay.
I don't know that off the top of my head, but I can tell you that was one of the things that the band director from one of the high schools mentioned to me as we're slowly trying to build back an instrumental program so we can help build the marching band.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I, I have one other item, if, if you would allow it, uh, President Holmes?
Yes.
Under athletics, I just wasn't, wondering if we can get an update. I know that, I, I'm not sure if it was feasibility studies, or what actually went out regarding the gym at West Granton? And where does that stand?
So that was put out, and all it was, was, um, and Pat could give you this in much more detail, it was for people to come in and present on giving you a design.
Okay, so where does that stand?
So we, we released this publicly last week, or maybe two weeks ago, excuse me. Um, we are having proposals due this week. Um, it's labeled, it's in our Open Gov procurement platform, it's called West Granton High School Gym, Gymnasium Feasibility Study.
Okay.
Um, it is not on the agenda to award at the May 5th meeting. Um, we feel we wanna evaluate the proposals and then potentially have a presentation to the board related to the services that they can provide. So this would be, if we move forward with it, it'll be something that we bring to the board in June.
In June, okay, all right, thank you.
But we are opening, uh, proposals on Wednesday.
So it is moving along?
Correct.
Thank you.
Before we continue, um, I just wanted to circle back to the band uniforms. Um, this was something back before we had the Athletics and Student Activities Committee. This was put on an Education Committee meeting about a year and a half, two years ago. Um, it was brought to my attention and just with, with the uniforms, with the band equipment and everything, it was just very, very aged. Some students didn't even have, um, a uniform, I was told. Um, at that time, it didn't really move forward. So this has been something that has been an issue for quite some time, I'm, I'm really happy to see that. It's on the agenda and we're actually moving forward with it at this time.
We're also, just so you know, informational, Mrs. Gribek is working with the high school bands as we're going to try to start 5th grade instrumental lessons next year. Um, as, as for the kids, uh, we're gonna be sending the high school kids down to talk about the instruments in band and stuff like that, so it's kid-to-kid conversation. So Mrs. Gribek is working on that now.
That, that's the good stuff we like to hear.
An update on that will be on the Education Committee meeting next week.
Pat, I know I brought this up before and we just never got around to doing it. But I think right around now would be a good time, seeing that we're talking about instruments and things that we're going to be needing. Maybe, uh, you could actually block off one day for you and I, or whoever else would like to come, to go down to the state.
Surplus.
Surplus. Um, because we may be able to cut some of our expenses on this if they have it available. As I said before, it all depends on what day you go in. I mean, today you could go in and you could have a saxophone, a drum, uh, and then, uh, the next day you come in and it's gone. But I think what we need to do is go down and find out exactly how it works, talk to the people, and tell them what our needs are, and find out what they actually have.
Sounds, yeah, Dr. Keating, I guess we will assess what our needs are first, and then we will coordinate some, some dates.
Thank you.
Budget and finance?
Mr. Laffey?
Mr. Borthwick. Under the, sorry, so under the consent agenda, we have motion to, motions to approve. Uh, the bill list, an exception bill list, delinquent tax reports, treasurer's reports, repository sales, budget transfers, disposal of assets, and budgeted purchases. And then we'll have a discussion and motion on real estate assessment approvals, if any.
Right now, we have one, uh, that Attorney Huerta is working on that is in mediation. We are waiting on a offer to settle from opposing counsel. If we have it in time, we will have it on for Monday, Monday evening, and you will receive a full, uh, a full briefing in this weekend's packet.
Okay, and then we have information on contract updates.
Uh, at this time, there's no, uh, uh, information to share about contracts that are purchased under policy 6.10.
Just a question quick under, uh, for bill list and exception bill list, is that, that's available come Monday night, right? That's not available? Like, I was, I was reviewing the legal bills, the bill list.
The bill list itself will be available Friday.
Okay.
It'll be in the board's packet up Friday.
Okay.
Uh, Pat, um, seeing that we're on the budget, the more and more that I hear about this, the more and more I get scared. Uh, as we all know, that I went to Atlanta for a national school board conference. They had one session that was dedicated to the, uh, uh, cuts that are now, now going on in the federal government. And, um, they basically said, they don't know what's being cut, we don't know what money we're going to have, what money we're not going to have. Um, they did mention that in previous years, whenever they'd do a continuing reso- resolution, they would list where all the money would be allocated to. This year, in the, uh, CR, uh, it was one line with the amount of money, and the way they explained it. Congress isn't saying, you get X, Y, Z for this, but X, Y, Z. They're basically saying, here's 1.5 billion, 2.5 billion, that you're going to have, um, Department of Ed divided up. The Department of Ed is being dismantled as we speak. Um, I think what we have to do is, I, I, and I know that we have some, some programs that are on the, uh, um, on our agenda to do. I'm getting very, very nervous, especially after I spoke, um, to some people today concerning what's facing us. We have an iceberg coming down the road, whether or not we know it or not, with our hospitals. Um, I believe you said we'll lose 1.8 million dollars in funding?
Related to?
Through taxes on the hospitals.
Related to the sale of a hospital that we anticipated going forward with last year, yes, it's approximately 1, 1.8 million.
That's providing that it's being sold to a nonprofit.
That's correct.
Gone from a profit to a nonprofit. So along with the Trump tax cuts, and along with this iceberg that seems to be floating down from, um, Gibbon Street down towards, uh, the administration building. And it is an iceberg, because if they pack up their doors, we're not only gonna lose 1.8 million dollars in property taxes, we're gonna lose wage taxes, um, business, uh.
Payroll preparation tax?
Yeah, so I mean, the effect is gonna be a lot greater. And I think we need to, I think we actually need to start thinking about, um, where we could be. And maybe pick a day. to start thinking about where we could be, and maybe pick a date and put a halt on all purchases except for emergencies, because I don't want to see us get back in the same boat, and I'm hearing now that we want to, we want to rent this, we want to rent that, and we have this. Let's find out right where we are with federal government, and what money we're getting, what money we're not getting. I think we need to also consider, like, before we make any major decisions, see where we are with the hospital, because that's a couple million dollars. We're going losing tax funds. And, okay, we're, we're in April now, going into May. Our budget starts in...
January.
December. I think what we need, and I love this phrase that I did pick up from the conference. The one person said, you know, right now, we're in 2025. We had all this COVID money coming in. We're, we had more money than we knew what to do with. In 2019, we were putting Band-Aids on things. Well, now, right now, I think we need to start putting Band-Aids on things.
And I think that's a great conversation for Director Porchwick to have a Budget and Finance Committee meeting where, Pat, you can get the information and possibly come back to us and speak from a point of what we actually know versus what we actually hear is going on.
Absolutely. Yeah, so we are also hoping Maggie Murphy is going to the Federal Programs Conference, the state-level conference this May. Usually, that is where we get an idea of what our funds will be. We are hoping that she can bring back, and it will obviously be a board memo, some more substantial information on what is currently just a guessing game.
Pat, one more thing about the under-budget. I know we talked about it numerous times. I know the city wanted us to work with them and look into it, but have we been looking into the, have we got an update from the city about challenging some of these nonprofits or looking into it?
So, the update most recently was, I believe they're still gathering some of the information related to the nonprofits and working with the, the county's office, with the county's assessor's office.
They started this like two years ago, didn't they? So, they have nothing after two years.
Well, I wouldn't say two years. I, I, I wouldn't say it's been going on that long, but it's been a decent amount of time.
Can we reach out to them to see if they have a timeline to get some...
What is this for, the hospitals?
It's for the nonprofits.
There was correspondence that, that they had set to go out, I believe sometime in March. I will see the status of that. Related to sending correspondence to nonprofits to provide supporting documentations for that status, I will get an update from the city.
Awesome. Thank you.
The Board, anything else?
Nope.
That's under Budget and Finance. Community Relations?
There'll be an update on the Be Smart program. Dr. Keating?
Mr. O'Donnell?
No, but we're just, we're still working with them.
Yes, we're still working on this Be Smart program. This was brought to the board a few years ago, and the Be Smart program has been in some of our schools at back-to-school nights, community event nights, but they're asking us to take it to a different level, and we are doing some research on that as we speak to see where, to see where it will go and what the ramifications will be. So, we are investing some time and giving it to our new legal team to review the specs of it as well. So, this is, this was done in '22. This was when they were first brought up to, to this board, and you'll handle it back in '22 with open houses in that building orientations and meet the teacher nights. They had a pool set up for, for this program, so we continue to work on it, and we will inform you when we get some more facts.
So, just a quick question. And I remember them coming and speaking, and it's been at our, some of our events. Is there, when you say they want to take it to the next level, is there any other districts that it's at that level that we could kind of look at?
No, there are no other districts in NEIU eighteen or nineteen. We've asked those tough questions of the program, and we've asked for some information on how it's gone over and some statistics of it. They have no, we would be the test case for Northeastern Pennsylvania.
So, will we get an update on some of the other information?
Yeah, so, so there are some, that's, and that's, I know the board always has questions like that, so Mr. O'Donnell's still working on gathering some of that information. We need to meet and go through the information to see if there's any other questions that I could think that you guys might ask me, so I could have those answers on stage.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. O'Donnell, can you just give a high-level overview of what the Be Smart program is for those that may not know?
It's safe gun storage.
Yeah, it's safe gun storage. I have a handout that I will give to all, all the board members so that you can review it, and there is some past correspondence from 2022. And it's about safe gun storage and, you know, having our, our home safe for all of our students, not only for the students, but, you know, as we all know, if you have kids, you know, your kids are going to other kids' houses. And this is part of a program that, it's a national program to, to provide information for parents, grandparents, whoever in the household is, to make sure their guns are locked up when their kids are there, and also their kids' friends come into the building. But I have, I have a little handout that I will pass out to all the board members that we've been working on it already.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. We'll have a motion to approve the following donations. EOC to Scranton High, Transportation to Wilkes University, Tracy Bumgardner Tommy Solumba Scholarship, Books-A-Million Summer Book Drive to Scranton School District, Bike Rack to West Intermediate from E&amp;N Painting.
Question on the Tommy Solumba Scholarship. I know we're getting close to graduation. I think they want to implement it this year. Is there a way possibly we can get a consensus this week to get the ball rolling on it? And have that, you know, the sooner the better? That's the feedback I got.
That's up to you guys, if you want a consensus.
I think, I think that'd be a great idea. Just, I mean, it's been a devastating loss, and this is a nice bit of honor.
Can we just do it right now? So, we have it?
Take a consensus?
I'll make the motion to...
Second.
I'll make a motion to make, do a consensus to approve the Tracy Bumgardner Tommy Solumba Scholarship.
Second.
Can we talk about it? I mean, I'm, I'm certainly in favor, but I just, I wanted to understand a little bit more, and maybe I missed it if we got information. So, if you could just update me. Is it something that Ms. Bumgardner is donating the money, or?
Yeah, and Mr. DeLuca's, I have to pull it up for you, too, right now. Mr. DeLuca's not here tonight.
I thought I saw something on it. I just want to make sure I know.
Yeah, there was something in the board packet on that.
Right.
But it would be a scholarship in his name and his honor.
Sure. Okay. And it's to a West Scranton student or just any Scranton student? Do you remember?
I believe it's West Scranton, but I don't, Rob's not here, and I apologize.
Yeah, I think I read it, and I just wanted to refresh my memory. Okay.
I have to go back in. I'll clarify for you guys.
Yeah, I think it was in the packet. Yeah, okay. What's that? Oh, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, and I just wanted to be clear that it's not, it's just consensus, consensus. Yeah, not a motion.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
I'll, I'll send an email to inform that we can move forward. Thank you. Yep.
That's it for Community Relations.
Education?
We will have a motion to approve permissions to attend meetings, conferences, motion to approve out-of-state field trips, if any, motion to approve five through twelve social studies curriculum, motion to approve pre-K curriculum, motion to approve K through eight steals curriculum, and then a motion to approve special education settlements, one.
There is one of those.
I have a question about the pre-K curriculum. Is this something new? Because I know, I know we had one in place that is being used, so how does this differ?
So, this is differ because it aligns with the Okdel standards that are required for the partnership with Head Start, but it was written by our own teachers.
Okay. Thank you.
Operations?
All right, all right. First, we have an update for West High School Auditorium Stage renovations, and before we get the update, I just want to say the painters and whoever helped, if any of their maintenance guys helped, the stage looks great.
Looks awesome.
It's unbelievable. So, hats off to them. Thanks for their hard work. It looks great.
Yep.
So, we, we recently released a RFP back on April 12 for the West Scranton High School Auditorium Stage renovation project. It's come to our, that RFP included a single-design-build-type concept. It's come to our attention that most likely this contract would require a general contractor, some electrical, and possibly abatement, which would require compliance with the Pennsylvania Separations Act. So, this project is currently on hold at the moment. We're going to issue a notice to those potential vendors or bidders who are interested in it. We're going to work with our legal team. We've already sent it over to make sure that any edits or addendums issued to the document are done so correctly, and we will turn it around as quickly as possible, and hopefully have something for the board sometime in June.
And I don't know if I missed it, I just want to double-check. Is there, has there been an update about Scranton stage? You know, there's lighting issues and stuff?
So, we are also working on that, too, so we should have an update for you at the end of May for that as well, to be able to replace those. I was there for the musical and whatever they did to, to make it work for that. It was, it was very nice, but we do need to get that done. And then, just as well with here, but I echo everyone's sentiments. It really looks awesome up here from what it was.
That's great. All right, anything else? All right, so next, we're going to have a motion to approve West Intermediate Gym Ceiling Design Fees.
So, the last time that we had put the change order, which is the next these go together, Director Casey had asked a specific question about what are the design fees. We had sent this to you. It's $2,800, $2,892.83 in design fees on the $80,000 project. I'm not changing my recommendation. This is to remove the drop ceiling in the West Intermediate Gym and to be able to have the open ceiling. I would like to see us move forward with this and not have a drop ceiling, which is what's in the scope of work right now.
All right. Anybody?
Aaron?
Yes.
These fees are general construction, mechanical, electrical?
We're not on that. I gotta read that. Let me read it first. All right, anybody else?
So, the design fees again are $2,892.83.
All right. So, discussion, possible motion to approve change orders for costs associated with work to remove the acoustical lay-in ceiling and provide an open ceiling. First one is GC CO-005, General Construction Contract, which is $19,427.10. MCCO-003, Mechanical Construction Contract, which is $1,979.50. ECCO-007, Electrical Construction Contract for $38,400. And PCCO-004, Plumbing Construction Contract, which is $20,327.21, which, drum roll, gives us a total of $80,133.81.
So, that's the total project, and those are the different elements that are necessary to complete all of the work, to not have a drop ceiling and to have the open ceiling. In addition, there's the, the, the fees which I, I named, which would be the first motion. So, again, I, I believe that it's in the best interest of the students not to have that drop ceiling. Having served as a building principal for a long time, drop ceilings end up with a lot of broken ceiling tiles, so I'm going to stick with my initial recommendation to move forward with that.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, I have a question. For the electrical construction contract and the plumbing construction contract, where they bid publicly advertised specs bidding?
The bid, the contract itself, the larger bid that, or sorry, the larger contract that the change order is going to fall under, yes, those were bid.
Publicly?
Yes.
Could I have a copy of those bids?
Certainly. You spent, you want the electrical and the plumbing?
Yeah, and the legal ad.
And the legal ad, okay.
Anybody else?
And all this is for the design fee of $2,000? Pat, if you could get them to me before our next meeting, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely.
We could put them in the packet for this week.
If I could have them sooner, I'd appreciate it, Aaron.
You got it.
Yeah, this is a little bit off topic, but we're talking about West Scranton High School, and since we're here, I, I just want to note that a member of the public stopped me during our break because they had concerns about our doors and the wood that is replacing them. So, I think this might be a good time to just let the public know what, what we're doing with that.
Yep. So, we had had a, we had had a fight. This, I can tell you what triggered it, that one of the windows had smashed. It's single-pane glass. They're old doors. They're, they're not replaceable. We needed to do something for safety and security, and today, we had an issue where we had to have a hold, so we want to make the rooms as secure as possible in those situations. The plywood is not attractive. I'm not even going to try to sit here and defend it, but it's what we needed to do in a short-term temporary fix to secure those doors and to make them as safe as possible. We released a bid for interior doors on Saturday?
On April, yes, April 26, the West Scranton High School Interior Door Replacement Project bid was, was released.
So, that is out to the public now to look to replace those doors throughout the entire school. Remember, we've already approved a bid to replace all the fire doors on the stairwells. This would now be the interior doors.
As well as interior.
Do we have a timeline?
Three weeks we have to advertise that for?
Right, but I'm just, like, it might take, how long you might take it?
Well, we would have to see what, what's brought back to us, and then we would, I can't, I can't give you like...
No, that's okay. No, I just wanted because...
Conceivably be done for next school year. Like, the work could be done over the summer.
I would hope, but I, I'm not promising anything, because if I promise it, you guys are going to hold me to it.
No, 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 no. I'm asking for a different reason. I mean, what if we did something with our art? I mean, our kids are unbelievable artists.
So, right now, Ryan, Dr. Stevens, tonight, we were, she, I said, do we have one done yet? They are looking to vinyl cover them and put artwork on the front of them right now, so we are moving down that path. As soon as I have a finished prototype, my goal is to put that in an email to you guys and be like, hey, look what we did. We just don't have one done.
Yeah, I was even wondering if they could do it as like a, like a senior project, or like some kind of contest for the kids, make it fun.
I was hoping that was a surprise, Director McAndrew.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, I was hoping I could say, look what we did.
Great minds think alike, right?
Actually, when I was walking to the ladies' room, Dr. Stevens ran upstairs to see if one was done, and she said that, I'll give you one second, they are still, we're testing vinyl colors to replace the old peeling missing room numbers that appear on the glass above the door. Wasn't, so, so that's kind of where they are. They did start to coat some of them. I know you guys can't see this. I'll send it to all of you, so that it's blended in and it doesn't just look like a piece of plywood. So, as soon as I have a prototype, it will be sent to you.
All right, cool. Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Next, motion to approve groundskeeping equipment?
Oh, for Mr. Laffey, because I know you know this better than me.
Yes. So, in this weekend's packet, our Operations Department provided a memo related to a request to purchase some new groundskeeping equipment. Just a little bit about our groundskeeping department. It consists of two individuals at the moment, and the equipment that they do utilize, I think much of it is nearing its end of life. Okay, so, so they're looking at a new, a new piece of equipment that would aid in the restoration of our fields as we go throughout the season. They have demoed this piece of equipment. They used it at Pataglia Field in March to help restore compacted and unplayable infield in less than one hour. As, as you know, our teams, not all of our teams play at their local schools, right? So, I mean, we have fields across the city that we have obligations to maintain and keep up to a safe playing condition. So, the recommendation is to, is to authorize the purchase of this piece of equipment. It is $49,000. It, there is a budget in the Operations Department for replacement equipment and new equipment. It would come out of that budget, so it's not something we need to take out of any type of budgetary reserve or, or another line item. So, again, the recommendation is to move forward with this, and again, Mr. Rutgers here as well, if you have any questions.
No, I just want to say, I mean, we're two hundred and some million dollar budget. You know, first thing people see is our, outside of our buildings, and I think they should be as, whatever equipment we need to get to make sure they look, you know, beautiful. So, we want to attract people, want to send their kids here. It's the first thing they see. So, I think it's good that we're looking to get some new equipment.
Is, is this going to be used everywhere, not just athletic, or just athletic?
Rob, why don't you expand on some of the other utility that this product has, or versatility, excuse me?
It is, thank you very much. It is a four-season product. It's not just necessarily designated for baseball, softball, any type of fields like that. There's different attachments that we could end up procuring. I think there's a total of thirty-eight or forty-eight attachments that we could also utilize this for things such as snow removal. Right now, we've had, we're focusing more on turf and grass and being able to maintain that better. There's, this is something we anticipate to be able to use year-round.
And having this equipment cuts down on man-hours. Am I correct overall, of having this piece of equipment significantly?
Yeah, just looking at what we accomplished at Pataglia Field in that short amount of time, we had it, I wouldn't say it was, you know, MLB level, but we took it from hard, compacted soil, like, if you, you could bounce a, a baseball off of, and it would come back up in your hand, to a, you know, a more playable, almost competition-ready surface in about an hour. an hour.
So, looking at this from the perspective, it almost pays for itself in the long run.
Normally, that job that we did in an hour would take almost two weeks. And, and, and that's really weather-dependent. It's, it's definitely, it was a game changer. I put that into the, into the memo.
So, just to clarify, this will be used across the district, not just on athletic? Or would this be used in various areas or just at?
Well, one of the, one of the attachments that I put on is called the aerovator system, which is something that's more designated to run over your grass, which you could, for example, you picture the lovely grass in front of, of Scranton High School. It would be something that would come in and break that up and, and aerivate it more or less, getting some more air into the soil so we can seed better and get better grass production. So, when it's not being utilized for baseball or softball fields or anything like that, we can use it additionally for just general grass.
Okay. That's what I was just checking. And then, it says, "No laser kit purchased at this time." Is that, that's not something that you believe is necessary?
I believe it is necessary. I just don't think that it's something I did not put on yet, but what the laser will allow it to do is, you could put a laser kit out to the outfield of a baseball field or whatever field it is that you're looking to grade. And then, you would go to a high point and a low point and you would say, "Grade it more or less from here to there." I'm simplifying it grossly. But what would happen is, once you establish that parameter, that you want the field to drain in a certain direction, at that point, the controls come out of the user's hands and they are literally driving it around and that laser is talking to the device and the device is automatically manipulating the controls to grade it wherever it is and get it more toward that area, which really helps with getting water off the fields. The more water you get off of a baseball field, the better it's going to be.
So, I assume it's significantly more expensive that you didn't include that if you think it would be necessary?
I don't have a pricing on it, but I wanted to be able to equip it, be able to do that and it's something I would look to procure for next season.
Couldn't always be added on?
Always added on. That's why I got, I respect the piece of equipment laser-ready. And I don't believe the base station is, is grossly significant cost. I don't think it's gonna double. But I can absolutely get pricing on it, but having the ability to go do it is cheaper to have it available, able to do it than it is to try retrofitting it after the fact.
Do we presently have the money in the budget for this?
Yes, Director Casey. So, in the operations budget, there is new equipment and a replacement equipment line item that this will come from.
And we're not overdrawn on that?
No, we're not.
Okay.
Anybody else? Alright. Next, we're gonna have a motion to approve Operations Hero Work Order System.
So, this is the work order system that we have been piloting. We have processed about 1,300, correct, Rob?
We will be at 1,300 this week.
Work orders through this system. We're asking to move forward with this and the financial impact is larger the first year.
Yeah, I think year one is approximately $45,000 because it includes some initial setup fees, right?
Implementation fees.
Some implementation, integration pieces. And then, we're looking at approximately $27,000 annually. Obviously, that's adjusted with inflation.
Can we possibly get some testimonials of, of our employees who used it and what they think about it?
Yes, sorry. I actually put a testimonial in the board packet.
Ah, I must have missed it. Okay. That's on me. Okay.
Sorry.
No, that's on me. No, you're right. You're right.
I have it here if you want me to share it.
Yeah, wanna give a couple out there?
Yeah, sure.
There's only one in the packet.
I can read the one from, from Miss Hinahan. Her testimony was, "I appreciate the system's simplicity. Easy use and full functionality. I'm especially pleased that it recognizes me each time I log in. It just works."
Okay.
Can we reach out and get more, just for general, I mean, one's great, but as many as we can potentially get, I think would help the board.
Okay, yes, absolutely.
Can we get that in the packet? Make sure it's in the packet for this week.
I'll do my best to have it on the packet.
Anybody else?
And this is, we're approving to purchase, oh, effective May 6th, one-year contract. Okay.
Can I just jump back to that groundskeeping equipment? I'm just sitting here thinking about it. Doesn't Lackawanna maintain the fields at, at Scranton High?
Some of them.
Some.
Just some?
The baseball.
I know they, definitely baseball.
Yeah.
I believe it's just baseball.
Softball.
Softball, sorry.
Baseball and softball, the fields that they utilize.
And Director Hine, obviously, we also, you know, we have fields up at the East Grant Little League that are northeast and, um, south intermediate schools use for softball and baseball. Obviously, some of our West students play at Sloan and Bataglia, I believe.
Sloan and Bataglia, and we also renovated the softball field at Tripp.
Tripp.
Alright, thanks.
Great. It's a good question now, because it got me thinking. Would their employees be using this equipment?
No.
Okay. Wanna double check.
If I had an unlimited budget, I'd turf everything, so I never heard to hear about my field again.
I just wanna say that to the public.
I agree, I agree.
I agree.
Um, in regards to the, the last thing we were just talking about?
Operations?
The, yeah, the system. It's, the refine the advanced reporting tools that we have requested. Is that something that they already, they definitely do and they're just working on it or?
I, I missed a question. I'm sorry.
Um, it's a next steps for, what is it, Operation Hero? Operations Hero? Continue working with Operations Hero developers to refine the advanced reporting tools that we have requested?
Yeah, they have some reporting tools now. They're sufficient for basic data, but I'd like to work with them and it's something that they've offered out that we can start requesting more detailed and more customized reporting. Again, we haven't paid for a subscription, so it's, it's, it's available. But I, I wanna work with them to get more actionable dashboards, more actionable reporting that I can give to you.
We, we took a lot of, we heard a lot of concerns from staff over that School Dude system. So, this is, this is what we think is going to replace that and staff's gonna be happy. Is there any kind of a trial that we could do with this?
We, we've been completing a trial since, since November.
Okay.
And we're, we're, we're gonna be at 1,300 work orders. I mean, we've instituted, prevented a maintenance, exterior, interior checks where it, it generates and it's, it's, it's trackable data.
Perfect. And, and this is what the staff, the staff seems happy with this?
Uh, my operations team, yes, absolutely.
Okay. What about, did we get feedback from faculty? I know-
That's why I think we're asking for more.
Doctor, I just ask for them to put, we did one, but I want numbers. The more you can get, the better, because we wanna ensure that, again, not knocking anyone, this doesn't turn into another School Dude. So, preferably, teachers at all the schools, not just one school. I'd get a couple from each school if humanly possible. Negatives, pros, cons, what needs to be improved. We want real feedback, because the last thing we wanna do is vote this in and teachers come back and go, "This is just as bad as School Dude." We want something that's, again, user-friendly. People are, again, the people using it, great feedback or negative feedback. As much as you can get us, good or bad, I think that will help all the directors in moving forward.
Rob, can you get to Sydney first thing tomorrow morning and see if she could do this through a thought exchange very quickly?
Yes, I just wanna, I just wanna state with, with that. You know, I was recently at a conference with the other directors of operations and it was one of the things that I brought up. How do other school districts, and I was in a room of 200 of me, and I asked how other school districts manage work order systems and do they open the work orders up to teachers? And it was a resounding no. The reason behind it is, there were some stories from, from school districts where it was opened up and, and their work orders went from a manageable number to 2,000 a week. And it becomes an unmanageable and it becomes garbage in, garbage out, and it just completely flooded it. So, one of the procedures that we're looking to implement is having that building supervisor be in that first level of defense. If there's an issue that is in the building, bring it to the building supervisor first, let them triage it. If it's something that can be triaged at the building level without putting a ticket in, for example, changing out a trash bag and a can shouldn't be a work order. Let them handle that. And if it be, if it warrants having external work performed by trades or otherwise, having the building supervisor implement that work order into the system. And at that point, we're at 1,300 and we're doing our absolute best to keep up, but we have 200 open right now that we're still working through. If I was open to floodgates, we would be well beyond anything manageable.
But possibly, is there a reason why there's over 2,000? Here's my fear. Who's going to police that building supervisor to ensure that they are taking reports?
I was just gonna say, we'll, we'll ensure that there is a system of internal reporting within each of the buildings so that nothing goes missed. That would have to happen.
Yes.
Do we think we would have that by next week or should we consider pulling this motion maybe till the June meeting so that we have sufficient time to get that feedback and have that plan in place?
I, I can talk to the building principals.
Right now, this doesn't, pulling this does not affect us, am I correct? In your installation, if we decide to go forward, pulling it for another month does not hurt you in being prepared for school. Does it?
Or is there a trial, like?
Yeah, so do we settle for a trial for another month?
I will get that information to you and have it for the board packet this week.
Awesome.
I was gonna, can we have the contract in the packet for Friday?
I, I'm sorry. I'm having a hard time hearing you.
The, you, Mr. Laffey, sorry, said the cost out, but I don't think we have a potential contract.
You will absolutely have that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
It is around that mark that Mr. Laffey stated.
Okay. Thank you.
And circling back, what makes Operations Hero so much better than School Dude, like, comparatively speaking?
Speaking with those that have utilized School Dude, and I'm, I'm gonna quote Miss, Miss Hinahan here. It never worked for her. It would never recognize her as a user. Some months it would, some months it wouldn't. It, it was-
Consistency?
There were, it, consistency was, was broken. I don't wanna go up and bash a vendor publicly, but there was, there was issues that we were not able to fully work through.
Okay, and how about a price comparison, Mr. Laffey? Maybe that's something that you would know. Unlike, what is the difference with School Dude versus?
Yeah, I'll have to get that for you. I don't have it off the top of my head, but I, we can certainly provide it.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else? Alright, next, we're gonna have a motion to award elevator service contract.
So, no, do you wanna go, do you want me to go? This came with the elevators for the first year.
Yeah, obviously, this is a service contract for the three new elevators that we installed at the schools this year. The contract came with a, a service contract built into it for the, I believe for one year. This, we have a proposal for, to extend the contract for, a service contract for those three elevators at a cost of $780 per month or $9,360 a year for five years.
When, when, sorry, tell you go.
My, my question is, because I know that the, the elevators were delayed in being completed. So, shouldn't the timeframe start from when they were working and available for us to use instead of, say, now? I know they installed them by now, but they were not usable for us until, anyone remember the timeframe? Till November, December? So, shouldn't this be something a company should be looking at, at that timeframe? Again, warranty start when the car works.
No, I, I completely agree, President Holmes. I-
This becomes active at that point.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're just trying to get, be proactive with getting it to the board and having it ready for you.
Okay, so we're not starting to pay until December?
Correct. We're not starting to pay until we reach the end of our built-in contract.
Okay, can we have that in writing just because, from the company, just to ensure there's no questions?
I, I believe part of it, doing it early also. Was there some discounts?
Then there was discounts applied in there also.
Right, and I'm okay with that, but I wanna see something in writing from the company, not from our perspective.
I'll have that, I'll have that to you.
From the company into our packet saying this so that we all feel more comfortable going ahead and voting, just because, again, the company did delay without us knowing till the last minute. So, right now, I don't really take their word unless it's in writing.
I understand. I'll have that for you in the weekly packet.
Thanks.
Was this in a previous packet?
No, there wasn't.
Okay.
By the way, you were in the room with 200 good-looking guys like yourself, bald, like us?
Always.
Must've been fun.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Alright, and finally, last one. Motion to award Western Intermediate approximate floor bid.
So, this was put out to bid. We will be bringing forward the lowest responsible contractor.
And we will be opening them on Wednesday.
Perfect.
Nice.
Anybody?
And this is a rebid. If, if you recall, we received only one bid on the first project, so we, I'll use the term rejected it, but we declined it due to lack of competition. So, hopefully, we have some more competition this, this time.
Okay. Great. Good. Personnel?
Right, under personnel, we will have a motion to approve the personnel report.
We'll have, we'll have a motion to approve the second read, updates and revisions, excuse me, on the following policies. 103, discrimination harassment affecting students. 104, discrimination harassment affecting staff. 234, pregnant parenting and married. And 817, responsible contractor.
And I just wanna, just comment on that. So, the responsible contractor policy will mirror the city's responsible contractor ordinance.
Correct. It's the one that was written by John Freund.
Right. So, we, like, we are technically, well, not technically, we are following it anyway, because we're, all of our schools are within the city. So, this is kind of doubly, right? I mean, am I?
It's now, it's now becoming our own policy as well.
Right. So, the only thing we need to be sure of in doing that is if the city's changes, we have to make sure ours is updated accordingly.
If we so choose to, to align to the, like, I don't know what that change would be. You would wanna look at that change and assure that you would wanna align to that change.
Right, because we have to follow the cities. That's my point, right?
Right.
We have to follow what's going on in the city, so we would have to then make sure that when they update, if they do, we do as well.
Right. I just, I, I feel like, and Glenn, I'm gonna, I feel like, given a carte blanche answer to that, 'cause I don't know what the change would be, we would have to look at the change and assure that the change is what we wanna put, do you know what I mean?
Right. No, no, I'm, I'm in favor of it, absolutely. I just wanna make sure that we're aware of that. It's something we, we would wanna stay on top of to make sure, I think, that we would be in line with the city.
Let, let me help clarify. We don't have to do it because the city's doing it. That's what the city is doing that for itself with its own contracts and contractors, which is what we're mirroring. We're not legally required to do what the city's doing. We're simply adopting what they are doing and the, and the county is doing because we're so decided.
We call affirmative zoning, all those.
Correct. Yes, we will always follow up.
The, for the discrimination and harassment policies, those are just reflective of PSBA changes?
Correct. Any changes there, Mr. Generalizer, are all PSBA changes that came through the PNN, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
There's been some big federal changes, so that's why some of those are coming at us.
Yeah, like, half the policies crossed off and then rewritten and-
Because there's been some big federal changes.
Vendor relations. Mr. Casey's not here, so Director Chazek?
Oh, sorry. We will have an update on security services.
So, this is another bid that was put out. Kevin Carney is doing some extensive work on everything that was brought back and working with the legal department, and we will be bringing in a recommendation to you.
So, that, that's gonna include the cost out of-
Include an extensive cost out.
Okay, and all that'll be in this week's packet?
I will make sure that it is.
Okay, thanks.
I have a question. I know we're looking at possibly hiring our own. We have a lot of great security officers through the company. Is that something we could recruit them? Is there, is there something in our current contract?
You have to be very cognizant of the language in contracts right now. So, that's why legal needs to vet everything.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, we will have a, a motion to approve the mom and pop contracts, if any. Motion to approve updated list of transportation drivers, if any. Motion to award 2025 lumber bid. Motion to award 2025 medical bid. Motion to award 2025 sports bid. Motion to award 2025 consolidated supplies bid. General office supplies, art supplies, music equipment and supplies. Motion to approve MOU between American Lung Association and SSD. Motion to award food service management company. I don't know if there's anything on that.
Yeah, I'll give you a little background on that. I, I did provide a memo in this weekend's packet, but as you are aware, we are required, your food service management contract is a one-year contract with four optional renewals. So, at, at, at least every five years, you do have to go out for competitive proposals. It is a process that is overseen by the state. It's the Bureau of Food and Nutrition. So, it's, it's very, it's a, it's a structured RFP process with their standard RFP documents. The district did begin advertising for this back in February 2025. Again, two area newspapers for three weeks as required. It resulted in us, it resulted in us receiving six proposals from qualified food service management companies. The next step in that process was the formation of a review committee. That committee was formed and included representatives from Act 93, the SFT Local 1147, the SCIU 32BG Maintenance and clerical. We score based on multiple criteria and, and this year, we chose to score on cost, years of experience, guarantee, which is a financial guarantee that, a profit return of the district, service capabilities, financial conditions, accounting reporting systems, personnel management and student engagement and quality assurance. So, the committee has scored, has scored all six proposals. The RFP document does allow you to negotiate with none, one or all, all vendors who meet a minimum point percentage. It's commonly used, it's known, known across the state to commonly use 85%. That's what we've used. So, of the six proposals that we received, five of them exceeded the 85% score. So, currently, right now, we have five, we have a very competitive proposal here. We have five vendors that are separated by less than three and a half points. The committee would like to propose a best and final offer to all five. It's, what we would do then is they may come back and reduce their costs. We would recalculate that score. Again, it is allowable by the divi, excuse me, the Borough, the Bureau of Food and Nutrition. I've confirmed that in writing. I've also had our legal department look at it as well. They've signed I've also had our legal department look at it as well. They've signed off on it to go ahead and, and proceed. So tomorrow morning, we will be requesting that for them to return their best and final to the district. We will re-score and then make a recommendation for the board.
I'm gonna ask the same question about the security. We have some great employees who might work for a certain vendor who know our kids and do a great job. Is there opportunities for them possibly, if we go a different direction, to apply to, or does it prohibit them because of?
I think my, my understanding is many times, a lot of the non-management staff would most likely have opportunities to, to, to transfer.
Cool.
If there happened to be a change in the food service management company.
And since we have five qualified bidders, this is an opportunity for basically, like you said, so cost reduction. So you're gonna say if you want this contract, you need to be, you need to be able to provide the best fiscal option for the district.
Yeah, so again, this is a best and final offer. You know, they most likely will, if they so choose to continue to participate, they may reduce their cost. Cost is the number one criteria in this process. It's ha-, it has to be. That's, that's mandated by the Bureau of Food and Nutrition. We will recalculate those points if there are changes to the cost, re-tally, and the, the, the most advantageous or highest score is the one that's recommended.
Odd question. So you said it's the best final offer. If, let's say, everybody comes in and two of them are close, or whatever, what if someone says, actually, you know what, I can go lower. We're not gonna let them try again?
I have in writing from the bureau that it's best, is last and final.
Okay, so this is, okay.
Yeah, I, I would defer to our solicitor's office to see if, if further negotiation can come. But the, the document I have in writing states best and final.
Okay, good, thank you.
And I, I think you put in our packet, but if you could just clarify, you know, for the public, who's on that committee? Who's involved in that decision and review?
Certainly. So I'm acting as the negotiator, so I'm not a reviewer. But again, we have representatives from the Act 93, so we do have a principal. We do have representatives from the SFT. I have a school nurse involved, the SCIU 32BJ Maintenance. So one of the district maintenance staff that may work with our food service management company in the cafeteria area of, of operations. And also our, our 32BJ clerical piece, which is a, a member who has worked, is currently working within the food service realm of the district, right? She handles all of our claims for free, um, excuse me, reimbursements for our national school lunch program.
And there's no board members on it, correct?
No board members.
Mr. Laffey, I have a question. Currently, we have Airmark. They do a phenomenal job in our schools. They also, at the elementary level, they have staff that oversee the students at recess. Is that a part of this process? Are we looking to continue, like, with that? Have the food service personnel oversee the students at recess, or how would that work going forward? If they do not secure, if we do not continue with them going forward, I guess?
That's a great question, Director Chesick. So part of the RFP document, you must list the, the labor and the positions that you anticipate. That way, everyone is submitting proposals based on, on the same. So inclusive in our RFP document is an extensive list of positions that we, that we intend to have within the district, and it includes the lunch monitors at the elementary school.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, and to clarify, you said cost. This is very overseen by the state, and cost is the number one. So there's other factors that are, like, so when this comes back, it's just whoever's the lowest now that you're-
So there's three areas that you have to score on. The state makes you score on these three areas. Cost, years of experience, and guarantee. And they actually set the amount of points that are in each of those categories. You then can choose to mult-, you can, you then can choose to evaluate on additional criteria.
Wait, cost, years of experience, and what?
Guarantee.
Oh, guarantee, okay.
So what a guarantee is, is someone may state that we guarantee that you operate at a million dollars of profit this year. If for some reason, we did not, let's say we only operated at $100,000. They'd be responsible for basically paying the district $100,000, assuming that there wasn't any, what they may call an exception to the guarantee, like, maybe we didn't operate 180 days a school. You know, but, so, but then we choose to continue our evaluation on other criteria as determined by the committee, which include, again, service capability, financial conditions, accounting reporting systems, the personnel management and staff, student engagement and quality assurance. This is all in the, this is all in the memo that's in the board packet.
So is, could we get, or like, no, I guess we don't need information at this time, but, so is, from my understanding, Airmark puts, our current vendor puts money into our schools if we, at some point, didn't they put money into West Intermediate School, maybe? Is it, was it West Intermediate School?
So-
Is that something that-
Many times, I, without being a little more specific, I'm gonna have a hard time answering that question.
That's fine.
But let me just say this. Many times, the, they will, our food service management company will solicit grants for us, competitive grants, which we can use to, it's on the district's behalf, and maybe for a school breakfast challenge, right? And we may win $5,000. We can use those dollars to purchase equipment, to, you know, to expand our breakfast offerings. Additionally, the profits of the program that go into, it's Fund 52 in our, in our oper-, in our, in our government-wide financial statements, but it's Fund 52. The profits of that program help us maintain the operation. So when there's, when there's equipment that's necessary, those are the dollars that we use to do that, okay?
Okay, so if there were, like, changes and such, it wasn't necessarily from the vendor per se, it was probably from a grant, or?
So years ago, years ago, we did switch from a, a purchase-to-service system. And it was included in a proposal that they, they would upgrade the purchase, the POS system at the schools where the students enter their PIN, PIN numbers if they need to, at their cost, but then they would amortize it or depreciate it over the life of a five-year contract. We've, that's been fully amortized, and that was many, many years, years ago, so-
So whichever vendor comes in, we should see something similar, such as applying for grants and things such as that?
Yes, I would imagine.
Real quick, speaking about grants and grant writers, I know we lost the grant writer we had, the, we shared with the city. Any update on what we're doing with that? Are we replacing or doing our own?
There's, there's two positions that we have to bring forward, and that's one of them, and the other one is the replacement for Pat's office as well. And we're working on those job descriptions to bring those forward to you.
Perfect, thank you.
Sorry, I do have one other question. How long has the current vendor been with the school district?
I have no idea.
Well, at least 12 years. Prior to that, I'm not, I'm, I'm not exactly sure. I, I'd say it's at least 12, it's at least 12.
Okay, and I know Director McAndrew had sort of asked this, but like, if we go with a different vendor, I guess, i- if those individuals with Airmark would lose, I don't say lose their jobs, but they would go elsewhere unless they were to apply to the current vendor, whoever wins, I guess.
As I stated earlier, like, I, I'm, it's my understanding that many of the non-management positions would most likely have an opportunity, if there was a change in your FSMC, your food service management contractor, vendor, excuse me, company, to, to apply for, for those jobs. I, I can't obviously guarantee that all positions will, will be there, but rest assured that every position that we have in the district right now was in the RFP document that we hope to maintain, if not expand, our staff. So we're not looking to reduce the number of positions that we have, that we have in the district working in the cafeterias.
I just want to know, like, if they would, like, if, if, like, a new vendor would come in, like, with their own staff?
Well, I mean, this is, this is as similar as the, the bus contract, right? So you had one bus company with certain bus drivers. You hired a new bus company. They might, I'm sure they probably did hire some of the people, but assumingly, so some of the, those people would have to be moved around with the company. They work for one company. And they would have to either quit that company or get moved into a different position with that company. So just as, like, if Company A, they worked for Company A, they would either have to go to a different city or state with that company, or get hired by the new company. There's no guarantee for anyone to remain where they are unless they decide to put in for that and apply for it.
Yeah, like, like I said, like, like, each, each food service management company in their proposal identifies a management team. So they're coming in here with, with a GM, you know, like, that's, they work in-house with these FSMCs, okay? But I, I would think there will be opportunity. I, I can't guarantee. I can research it tomorrow in further detail. I wasn't anticipating this question.
I just put a note down on, that legal needs to review the transfer. In education, I would call a transfer of entities, and it's not the same in that practice. But what would the transfer be, and what's the current contract language? And I don't know that, so I cannot make comment on such things right now.
Do you want me to continue?
Pardon me?
Yeah, we have one more.
Okay, so a motion to award food service equipment bids, and then a discussion 2025, 2026 PSBA membership.
So some people have asked me questions on, do we need PSBA? So in my time in administration, PSBA has been utilized in my capacity as a superintendent and a senior administrator, as the entity that provides policy updates through what we call the PNN, which is released five to seven times per year, depending on legal changes. There's also member services that you all have, including board member training for new members, that has to take place. And then there's administrative services as well, which are, are benefits of the membership. We have a more robust package, which also helps provide with administrative regulations that align with policies. I do not know, and I, when, I, I need, I, I need to work with legal, it's one of the things that I put there, if there's another option beyond the PNN for policy updates. I don't know of one. I'm not saying one doesn't exist, but policy is extremely important in aligning policy to law, and when you get policy, at the end of the policy, it references all the other policies, cross-policies, and the legal point to that. I don't know of anything else that does that and gives you those updates. So I will continue to ask those questions, but the PNN, both in my capacity as a superintendent in another district and here, and then the explanation in the PNN as to why policy changes need to take place is something that I don't know if it exists in another capacity. So I just want to state that on the record.
Aaron?
Yes?
The little bit that I see of PSBA and NSBA, I'd recommend that because of what I stated before about the federal funding and the way that the federal government is treating education, I would recommend, from my own point of view, that we stop doing business with PSBA. I've lost a lot of trust in them. And that we'd be able to go with the NSBA.
But I, and that's, that's what I'm trying to clarify to everyone. I don't know if NSBA will give me state-level policy changes like the PNN gives us right now.
Well, that's easy enough to do. You pick up the phone and your call box.
Correct, and that's, that's, I just wanted to go on record stating that, because I know that, that people have said, you know, why PSBA? I'm giving you my, Aaron Keating, why, why I need it to PSBA in my capacity and seniority.
I fully under-, don't you have a superintendent's organization that you belong to?
CASA does not give me the, does not give me the policy updates like the PNN does.
Okay, now, I did give you a book of policies, correct?
You did, yes, yes. But that, so, so what the PNN does is, and I'll, I'll use the policies that are on here tonight. There were broad, sweeping executive orders that were given that changed how policy, how, how law exists. Our policies have to align to law. So the PNN is sent to us, and it says, you need to change these policies because law changed, and you need to align to the new law. I'm saying that that is a resource, that if, if you don't have PSBA, I don't know, and I've tried to do some digging around, who else provides that?
I, I follow what you're saying.
I, I think I have a quick, simple thing that might be able to fix this and get that answer. Can we reach out to PSBA and say, is there, do you represent every, do you work with every school district in PA?
I, I know there's one other local district they don't.
Can we reach out to them and see what they do then?
Yep.
There you go. Does that work, Bob? See if that gives us another option to, to look at.
In other words, give her time to go out, research, come back to us.
Well, that's all I'm asking for.
That's what she said she was gonna do.
And Ty, I'll be honest with you. Since I've been talking to people with NSBA and PSBA and everything else that's been going on, I have lost a lot of faith in PSBA. Matter of fact, PSBA broke away from NSBA. And at a time that we don't know where the federal money's coming, or what's it going to do? I think we at least need to join NSBA just to find out what's going on on the national level. PSBA is on the state level. But we need to keep our eye on the ball on what's going on in Washington, because, to be quite honest with you, everything that I'm seeing that's happening in Washington, we're gonna get cut, federal funding. And one of the things that they mentioned, and you may want to consider this, Aaron, with your PR department, we need to go out and tell the people exactly what's going on in Washington, because if there's cuts, when it gets down to our level, it's one of two things. We either cut the program, or we raise taxes. And nobody's gonna be sitting here saying, it's Donald Trump. They're gonna be saying, it's Aaron Keating, it's Ty Holmes, it's Bob Casey, it's Catherine Fox. They raised our taxes. And then on the other hand, you're, you're gonna have where the programs are cut. Well, we're, we're really trying to get our preschool program back. Well, funding on that might not be there. And all I'm trying to do is say, hey, listen, wake up. Look what's going on in Washington, because it's not a pretty sight. And even the experts down there, the lobbyists, they don't know what's going on. And, Aaron, I am-
I'm laughing because, and I, I, I don't know, when I was in Washington DC, I was sending email communication to the board, taking notes as those experts were talking to us, and that's kind of what they said to us.
Correct.
Nobody knows what's going on. So in your email from me when I was in Washington DC, there are very, very detailed notes of everyone who spoke to us, talking about the difference between budgeting and reconciliation, talking about where they see concerns and loopholes. So like, I did try to provide all of that when I was in DC and update the board regularly.
And I know you did, Aaron. What we need to realize, and what the people of the city of Scranton, the parents of our kids have to understand, is we're having one gigantic iceberg come at us. And all of a sudden, where we're used to having COVID money, we're not gonna have COVID money. Plus, we're not going to have the regular funding that we had in 2019.
Right, and that's why I said we should have a budget and finance meeting, where Pat and the budget and finance chair come up with a plan so they can explain all this information to us exactly where we are.
And Ty, I agree with you, and the reason I'm so adamant is because everybody seems to be floating through life and saying, oh, it won't affect us, it won't affect us. Well, guess what? It's affecting us, and you better realize, everyone who's sitting on this table, and everyone who's watching out there on YouTube, better understand that it's gonna come down to this board, and this board's gonna have two choices. Either to raise taxes or cut programs.
Again, we don't want to cause a panic. That's why I said let them get together, gather the information, and present something without guessing, because we do need to get the information from Washington, from the people that-
You're, you're right, Ty.
So we need to do that, because if we start talking about taxes, we will cause a panic. We need to have accurate information.
You're taking it from one point of view. I'm taking it from another.
Okay.
I've seen a hundred days of this bird, and guess what? We need to cause a panic, and we need to get the people writing, whatever our congressman's name is. Does anybody know who he is?
President.
President.
I did, I did meet with him when I was in Washington DC. I did explain that our federal funding touches 160 positions, as Mr. Laffey reviewed in one of the meetings. I did explain that there's $6.6 million of our money that's embargoed right now, that we already spent, and that we require. The only thing that was in our additional spending was $370,000. and that we require. The only thing that was in our additional spending was $370,000. So I did... I met with him personally and his staff, and I did go through all of that when I was in DC.
And what did he say?
Well, right now, they're in the same point of limbo. I believe that a lot of times, some of the things that are coming out are not really getting to elected officials and meeting with Senator Fetterman as well, much more timely than we're getting at watching the news in the morning right now. So there's a lot of guessing that's taking place. If you go back to those notes that I sent you, the budget information particularly, and how things can be moved around, was explained to us in details. And I know my notes were choppy, and God help you how many spelling mistakes were in them, but I did try to give you guys everything that I got when I was down there.
Well, did you ask him if he'd have a town meeting in one of our schools, like I asked?
We have not been able to establish a town meeting yet, but it's not something I've quit working on. I do have a meeting. I was just called today. I have to go to a meeting on Thursday morning over Penn State campus, so many of the representatives will be there. I'm going to try to capitalize on that moment.
Okay. I'm just going to leave everybody with this one message. Come December, when everything sort of flushes out, I don't want to be here saying, I told you so. Remember today. And Ty, it is time to panic.
I understand that, but I'm asking them to go back and gather information so we can accurately...
I said my piece.
I got it. I understand that.
Can I just briefly, on the topic of discussion, per what Director Casey said, can we get information on potentially joining both? Is it possible to join the NSBA as well as PSBA at the same time?
The other thing... I'm sorry.
You're fine.
Okay. The other... I jumped, and I apologize. The other thing is, there are multiple membership levels to PSBA, so I will also give you that information.
Okay, but I understand Director Casey's concern of PSBA not being part of NSBA. So if, and like he said, maybe we could look at being partners of both, because I understand... You want to get all the information you can get.
I want as much information as we can.
Yeah, I'm understanding of that. So, and I do understand how much PSBA supports various administrators, so I don't want to see us lose resources while we're trying to gain information. So I think that's perfectly fine.
I agree with you. But right now, what's going on between PSBA and NSBA is a major power struggle. I mean, there's no other way I can put it. PSBA is trying to... And a couple others are trying to start their own organization. NSBA is trying to educate, and we have more researches. The better information we can have... Now, when we broke away from NSBA, it was probably because of financial reasons. Right now, I don't think we could afford to not be part of NSBA. And I know everybody's tired of hearing me speak, and I'll be quiet.
Could we also get some input from our board secretary, Mrs. Orr, regarding PSBA, and then perhaps Mr. Gennalesa, since he oversees policies? Maybe they could provide us with their thoughts in whether... How much they use PSBA, and, you know, what the benefits they are, or the, you know, pros and cons, if any.
Could you both provide that to packet for Friday, please? Mr. Gennalesa, could you also provide something in writing to the board packet?
Suppose you just got a memo assigned.
Catherine, all I'm trying to do is sound the alarm and make sure everybody at this table and in the city of Scranton realizes, we have a couple icebergs coming at us, and it's no longer 2025. We have to start thinking like it's 2019, when we didn't have the money and we had a large deficit.
I agree.
And at that, ask for a motion to adjourn.
We're not adjourning yet. Hold on, please.
Just so we did not have an executive session tonight, and I thank Glenna for coming and sitting in for John Froncy. Since John couldn't be here and we're transitioning to new legal services for the next meeting, there's two items, a security with the security officers, there's some stuff that needs to be done, and then some information on salaries. We will do executive session next week at 6 o'clock, and we'll do both of those items there. So we will not do executive session tonight. But thank you, Glenna, for coming in and being with us tonight.
And John Froyd, and John, we very much wanted to be here tonight. Not the default because they didn't have the default, because they couldn't.
Thank you, and thank you to King Spry for all that you did for all of our students while you were here with us.
Well, I felt it a great honor to be your lawyer and also your special ed director.
Yes.
And I'm here to tell you, you have wonderful people, and I'm in a unique position to know that because I was part of the team.
You were, and we agree with you. We do have some pretty wonderful people here. You're right. Thank you.
I also want to thank King Spry for, again, coming in, helping us out, negotiating us through a tough time, solving a lot of our problems, providing guidance and answers. We were able to accomplish a significant amount of things in a positive direction because of the guidance. We appreciate the professionalism, the dedication to the district, and that goes to everyone in your office. So please extend a thank you from me, I will say from me, to the entire organization. We greatly appreciate you all and wish you nothing but the best of luck.
I second what Ty says.
Definitely have a 6:00 PM executive session in the alumni room on Monday.
Okay, so it's good.
Motion to adjourn.